I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Colleen Stanley. I'm the committee chair. Tonight I have with me committee members Greg Seaberry, Mr. Fred Visconti, Michael Hadad at the end, we have Joe Skazababa. Also tonight we have with us the city's finance director David St. Clair. Over here we have superintendent of schools Dr. Sal Pascarella, deputy superintendent Dr. Glass is here, Director of Human Resources and Council to the Board of Education Kim Thompson. We have Board of Education members that are present are Gladys Cooper who is the chairperson, Richard Giannelli, Phyllis Tranzillo, Gary Falkenthal, Kathy Molinaro, Shirley Chilien, Sandy Steichen. Is there anyone that I missed? Okay. Exerciceo members we have here tonight Mary Taisho, Andrew Wetmore, Paul Rotella, Warren Levy, and Joe Cabo. Did I miss anyone? And of course I see we have a few members of the public. Today is March 20th, 2012, 6:30 PM. We are meeting here tonight for the school budget. This is room 3C at the third floor City Hall, Carahal Avenue. I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight and I want to thank everyone who is here that is showing compassion for the education of our children. I also want to stress that we have a lot to go over tonight and there will not be enough time to allow for members of the public to speak. Tonight's meeting will be an informational meeting and discussing the Board of Education's proposed school budget and their needs. In April, City Council will receive the mayor's proposed budget for the city. And at that, and at this time, we, the council members, do not know what the mayor's figures are at this time, but we will. And if there's any concerns that are brought up tonight, I can assure you that we will bring those concerns to the mayor's attention. And of course, there will also be a public hearing scheduled sometime in April before the final budget is adopted in May. And we will also have another meeting once we have those figures. I invite everyone who doesn't get a chance to speak tonight to, and voice their opinions to jot it down. You will have that opportunity at our next meeting possibly, but you definitely will have an opportunity to speak at the public hearing and once again at the main meeting. And of course, you know, we'd like the mayor to hear those concerns before the final budget is adopted. So, tonight, I think we should start off with, I'm not sure if David would like to start or Ed?
Gladys.
Or Gladys, would you? Okay.
Okay. Thank you. I would like us to resume and go over the budget. Our budget that we proposed to the city was 5.09 budget. And in that budget were all the things that we felt like that we needed to continue operating our schools and act with adequate funding and way for all students that you're doing there. We, our main focus is to make sure we keep teachers busy. That's one of our focuses. We know that there's a lot of other things going on within our schools, but we feel they need to focus on the budget and how can we work together as a group with you and come up with a number that's going to be pretty efficient for the school. If there's any, we have some information flyers that we'd like to pass off to everyone.
That hasn't changed, right?
Just some things are taken out and put in the other document.
Oh, okay.
The other document is updated for the...
They had the same date, data on them.
Okay. I was lazy.
Why, you don't have enough to do?
As I want to receive the absorption after the meeting, I can, we're going to go over this and then come in, and yet the specialists are going to be there, but we have people that do. But we know that there are certain things that drive our education budget, okay? When I look at this page here are the preliminary course drivers of this budget. And we talked about teachers' salaries. We can't, I'm not going to go one by one because I know there's a lot of things to intake. So, you know, just look at these and if you have questions, we have the specialists here that can answer those questions for you. Then we move on to the maintenance budget and we could talk about, look at all the items within that budget that helps drive our budget. And you can start with employees' benefit, workers' compensation, tutors and on down the list, okay? And then we move on to the third page. Page we talked about new staffing for teachers and how many we're going to need at the school and what specialty that we need those individuals in, okay? And then the last page is the added teacher value. And we can look at the safe harbor and the dollar amount that comes with the safe harbor. Our nurse, point five nurse that we want to put back into our system. And we institute tech curriculum administrative and staff development, give to that talent. Those are the things that we know that continuously drive our student system and the dollar. We as a group, along with the superintendent, would like to continue to work on the bus contract to, that's not the final number there, working with the bus contract. It's not a final number, working here at Signa, so that's not going to... Okay? We continue to meet with the vendors to reduce the budget. And as a group, and we have expressed it to the superintendent, we want all speakers to be so, there's nothing that you can look at and say that there's nothing hidden in those numbers. So, that's what we... I want to sort of turn it over to our chairperson that works very hard with the finance committee, Mr. Giannella, if he wants to add something to.
Just briefly to say thank you for allowing us to be here and to reiterate Gladys has said that this budget is still a work in progress. Budget, in addition to working with the cooperation of David and the mayor, there's a close unity in conversations, almost weekly, in terms of trying to resolve issues or coming up with a plan of attack to resolve some problems. I think tonight could be a good question and answer period, basically, for Dr. Pascarella and Ed to entertain your questions. Basically, they are affecting the ones that are driving the course. Open it up to Dr. Pascarella and you pick a few.
Okay, thank you all. Yeah, here it goes. Thanks. Many of you have been to our meetings and the reason why you see the entire board here because we really feel at a tipping point. We've, if you, you know, when you take a peek back in terms of our, our numbers, the average number of our increases, I think we've been very mindful of the, of the economic conditions and taken and addressed those issues very directly and honestly, always trying to leave teachers in the classroom. We took, I believe, a few years ago, we did early retirement, we really reduced that. We've been negotiating each year all of our contracts, the efficiency rate of the use of our money. I think, you know, for what's comparative, you know, we do use comparisons and it does say that we use our dollar very wisely. At the end of the year, we had been an opportunity to return money back to the city because the way things evolved in a school budget much different than a municipal budget, there are variances within that that happen. Special education occurs, students moving in and out. Our mobility rate, you've heard us talk about this, is up to 39% not only across the district but up and down the district. Our poverty rate's gone from 50%, from 32% a few years ago to 50% now to one school that's at 70%. So, you know, and one of the biggest predictors of need for more time for kids in order to achieve basic skills, which is a focus for us, has been their SES or their economic status, more than their ethnicity or anything else. That's not any great revelations all of them. So, the budget that we've had the last few years, quite frankly, we've reduced to the point where I've asked for 5.09%. At that time, it was the best estimate I had at that time. We, I called Colleen and asked what she would like for tonight. We have some updates on the numbers, but in that, the big one and largest driver that we have obviously has been the, our personnel. 82% of our budget is made up of personnel, the other 18% of all those seem to be discretionary isn't, we go for transportation, utilities and the rest. So, we've asked the principals, you know, what they need in their schools. Obviously, the board's focus and their focus is going to make sure we have our classrooms staffed correctly. So, we're looking at staffing. The other thing is we're one of two districts in, in this sector of the state, if not quadrant or half, that's growing. And these aren't just demographers talking. These kids are coming in our building each and every day and our enrollment's going up, leading to, they're going to be talking, I think, to the mayor pretty soon about doing some additions onto their buildings. I mean, so, you know, they're there. So, all of this coming together has put us in a position to ask what kind of budget increases they were asking. The first part of that budget is just, just moving things forward, focusing on core level, our core programs, just what we do every day, our business of, you know, going in, making sure there's materials in the classroom and having our teachers working with our students. We're trying to keep our class sizes, we've increased class sizes. That's not just here in Danbury, but it seems to be across the country. Budgets go down, class sizes go up. We're not any different than that. Our class sizes, our KN1 is about, we're trying to stay at 22, although that's in a pure sense, we have some that may run west, we have some that run more. At the upper level from three on, we're at 25, in some cases 27, 28. And, you know, we're dealing with that. At the secondary level, we have classes that keep the high school comprehensive. Some people will say, well, why do you only have 18 in that classroom, 30 now? Well, sometimes it's the third of the last sequence of a course, students are entitled to making sure that's there, whether it's in A, B, DC calculus, whether it's in kinesiology or physics, whatever it is, we're offering that, that third in the sequence for kids. The board's also redefined what kids ought to be doing at the secondary level. Instead of just shot gunning through select whom, the board has narrowed their focus so the kids are taking more of a science, mathematic, more of an academic path. That's increased some of our, our more expensive courses, which happens to be in the sciences, kids are taking labs now. So, all of that is playing havoc in here with our budget. But, you know, again, what we have been trying to do is reduce that and I think we've been doing that, we have been working with our, with our consultants and trying to reduce the numbers in the benefit package. And I think at this point, even though reflection in here is that we've been able to reduce that somewhat, we remember with the constituents last week, or two weeks ago, they're coming back next week to see if they can redefine that number so we can reduce it further. The, the part of the budget that takes care of that, it's called the maintenance budget, just moving it forward. If you look at the budget after that, then you can see that it is a budget that's reflected of the enrollment increases and any of the, let me just change this to, it's on the third page. So, you see a maintenance budget, then you see a budget that says enrollment increases in standard state mandates. That's about, that's about lingual students, we need to add some elementary teachers, we need some more staffing at the middle school and to see the sciences at the secondary school, which is about a half a million dollars in order to do that. So, the value added part of our budget is about 6.1%, just over a half a percent. In here as well, the last few years, the past four years, we've taken the Obama budget call, the last, our money that we've taken has been the 1.2 million dollars that we spread over two years, that's the jobs fund. That was not money that was squandered away. People said, why'd you use it? Well, that just kept the reliance on the city to give us a budget that much lower. We agreed it was better to do that to put these teachers into the classroom and see what happened as the economy improves. Well, hasn't improved to the point that we have, we wanted to, and unless the enrollment went down, we needed to have these folks. In fact, we needed to have them plus more for the coming year that were increasing our enrollment. So, in our enrollment increases in state mandate, you see it increases another 0.61% above the maintenance budget. The value added budget is really simple. If you're in the school district and need improvement, the, Hartford is looking at Danbury in terms of our achievement levels. We think that the teacher's doing a normal job, they're getting some growth, but there are more things that they need to do. You've been hearing a lot about the, the reform that Malloy is putting together. What he's talking about basically is in the past, time has been, time has been a constant, it's been 180 days, and achievement has been a variable. It's kind of the inverse of that. Now, achievement is a constant and time, time has to be the variable. So, they're saying that no matter what you do, we want kids to achieve a certain level. And we know to get these youngsters there, we need more time. And in this budget, you see something that says safe harbor intervention. They are folks that are doubling up time, extending time for students, we need remediation and in some cases, extension. Bill talks with his staff, we're plainly, we have a 10-month school year and we're trying to get 14 months worth of growth and we just can't do that without any more time. These are very capable kids with gaps in their learning and we need to give them more time. So, there's value added, it's simply saying we need to put in the budget some things that are going to assist us. The other part of this that you may have some questions about, you're listening to the governor saying he's putting 50 million dollars in education, he's taking about $40 million in identifying the content of the schools, about 20 districts that are in need of improvement. We are one of those 20 districts, there's about 39 and a half million dollars coming to both districts. Danbury's in a position for an application process and improvement process that can realize about 2.2 million dollars of added revenue DCS. But that's only going to be predicated on an application that we apply of closing the achievement gap, which can, which can has the distinct distinction of having the largest number one variable between achievement and the achievement gap throughout the country. We're number one in that. Consequently, they're saying, here's some more resources, provide us an opportunity for districts and towns to see if you can mitigate that gap. So, the value added here, although is pretty, pretty sure here, people see as generated differently as we start learning more about this reform. We've been meeting with the mayor, we met today, we met this afternoon, we've talked on the phone. We're trying to put the town in a position to maximize its fund while keeping an eye on economic conditions. And that's a reality that we have, we're faced with. We're looking at some things that are within the budget that are capable of being carried over. There's a 1% opportunity that the law, the committee, towns to work with schools in order to get some excess funds, to remain that in the budget that'll assist us in mitigating expenditures. So, we're doing everything that we can to bring a budget to you that's reasonable and acceptable and that we can access all these funds that the state's going to provide for us. But the word condition, mindfully, is said conditionally, it is not guaranteed. It's on a submission process and we feel very confident we can do that. We're one of the 15 school systems that has been portrayed under their supervision, providing them with, with an application about how we're mitigating our, our achievement gap with a plan. They've accepted that plan. The timing is good for us because we have not submitted a new plan and it will incorporate a lot of these ideas. The board has been talking about extending time for youngsters ever since I've gotten here, I've heard the town talking about kindergartens and extending times and wraparound. So, these things are possible, but first we've got to handle the core obligations that we have. And that's where we're at right now. With all that said, we're moving forward with the major drivers, trying to reduce that, identifying some budgetary issues that we might not have to do, that we may not need for next year. For example, technology, there's an offer to look at our technology. David was over and spoke to Ed last week about how he can speak to it, about how we could put a plan together to, to actually update our technology. We worked with the city for, you'll see, and here there's a reinstitute the directive of technology. Every time I come to this meeting, he says, what are you guys doing together? Well, here we're looking at working together, providing one technology person across the district. They meet once every two weeks to look at common areas that we can do more efficiency. I think we've gotten better at that and that's been a good thing for us to do, but we're still in need of it. We're still at a tipping point, we've still got to, you know, figure out how to fund this, this enterprise for these youngsters with the growing enrollment and the need factor. We've negotiated good contracts with the faculty, there's been some questions about how is it 400,000 when I see a million one in there? If you look at the page, we tried to explain that to you.
Can you go over that?
Sure, you can go over it. If you look at that, if you look at the second page here on the bottom, it talks about net contract increase to 400,000. It extensively looks at, the total increase is 1,565.
That's for all employees.
Of which 1,070 are teachers, okay? And you can see the other breakouts there. That when we applied, under employee benefits, when we applied the negotiated amount of money that's attributable to that salary and benefit item that we, we had anticipated would come to fruition during negotiations, it leaves a net, if you look at the bottom, a net increase of 400,000 dollars this year. So, although the increase is, is larger, when we go, when we present this, if we're to go forward to an arbitrary, we look at benefits and salaries. So, that's why we had settled the couple of the fair contract for this year. I don't know if you want to be added to that at all.
No, as you said, the...
Where you, show me those numbers. Okay.
I know, I told you the same thing, at my age, I need to visit, I'm too young than I am.
Right here.
See this down here? If you follow it up on top, you follow it up on top, go ahead, Ed. Look at the educational job, right below educational, which is educational job funding, zero, right here, right here.
Yeah, check the zero.
And then next to it is the salaries. Total increase for all employees in the budget is 1,005,000. Out of that, 1,070,000 is teachers, 27,000 nurses, 107,000 is administrators and the difference is for all other employees. And then, and then if you go down to the benefits, 1,150,000 preliminary benefit plan review, the work in progress, we already decreased that number by 1,076,000 on negotiations and the contract language. So, the difference between contract language and the increase with teachers netted out of 400,000.
So, in order for that to come down, it's not only our experience rate with our employee groups, it's also the manipulation of deductibles and co-premise, all of which are part of negotiations. Those things coming together at that time, the negotiators along with our specialists and you can anticipate a reduction of X amount. That's how we arrived at that number at that time. And in fact, that's why it's...
You said so, you said that the benefits of Signa is still in process.
Correct, correct.
Do you anticipate it dropping much?
Yes.
You want to explain that?
Well, we're still in negotiations. We're right now, we started at 10:09, we're down to 5:07, we're meeting in Emman, we told them, well, we anticipate, and we're meeting in Emman on next week.
They, when they were three weeks ago, four weeks ago, they, they needed to go back because, because of what we put in front of them, they want another month of experience. So, they truncated their experience and we felt they would have enough information to come back to us.
Next week, Wednesday.
It's Wednesday and they tried to give us a final meeting on what they were, we do expect that to be reduced.
And the experience is for the workers' compensation and whatever, right?
That's not workers' compensation, that's just fringe benefits, medical benefits.
That's a different, that's a different...
We're working with the city on, on workers' comp. As you know, the first 500,000 we have to pick up, so we're working with PERMA to see if we can be a little different than, than the city in that, so we'll just look at that.
Your experience in this type of work and negotiating for benefits and all that sort of stuff, has it ever occurred to you, and this would be my limited knowledge, has it ever occurred that perhaps if you teamed up with other community for benefits, insurance benefits, that you could have a bigger group?
What's happening now, the governor has put forward a plan for that. We have submitted all of our information to OPM and we'll see what it looks like. Coming back to, to boards already, that increase is bigger than their own increase. So, you know, it's new, just started, and the problem is it starts July 1. You get a, we get a price, let's say June 1st, and you have now tell, okay, can we change what we have in our language in the contract? So, it's brand new, they just rolled it out last week, they have a problem with, the only one so far is Oxford Health. Blue Cross has not made their decision to go on that plan yet, so they're, they're packing for it. So, we've submitted all of our information to OPM, they'll get back to us, we don't know. But they've tried that. You know, as you know, if you do two communities, they're very different.
I know, I was just wondering if...
Yeah, so the here, the state has one plan that everybody wants to go on, so we're looking at that. We should submit, I think about other, another, I don't know, I'll tell you in a minute.
Does it, does it look like you're moving towards the state plan?
Not this year.
Well, well, I wouldn't say that. We're still negotiating.
Well, that helps with negotiating.
Well, that's right, correct.
Because Signa, Signa does...
We're still negotiating.
What chance are we going to go by? Still negotiating?
Still negotiating, still negotiating.
We're still negotiating.
We're one of about 30 towns and wars.
You'll know by when.
After we hear from Signa, we'll know more.
Which should be?
Next week.
Next week, and we're getting some numbers back from, from this group as well, because Ed's been going to the meetings.
But you would, you would be able to have numbers by the end of March?
We will have, we will have a better number for Signa by March.
We may not like that number because it's not low enough.
Not low enough that we want to continue.
Will you be able to have numbers before or after we receive the, the mayor's proposed budget and before our next meeting? Which would be, I was hoping the, maybe the second week in April.
We should, yeah.
We have to.
Yes, you will have it.
Next solid influence in the world, but if we have to decide on that, we need to know what we're talking about.
The issue, the, the issue with this, it's not, even if the number was favorable, comparability of our plan and the plan that's submitted by the state is not something that can be done unilaterally by the board. We have to convene all of our unions and we have to demonstrate to them that there's compatibility. And if that can be demonstrated, then, you know, we have the right to move forward. So, we're just very careful of the plan that's there, so Blue Cross Blue Shield has not made a commitment, so that's a big issue. So, we're waiting for that opening to come, come first. Your question, Bethel, Newtown, all of us looked at a common plan, but our contracts are so different, right? We could not align something. So, the state, suit the plan. If everybody lines the state one, then, then it's workable because it subsumes a lot more. But individual co-ops, not very well. And people wanted to come to Danbury because we had a greater number, there's reductions in it, but it wasn't to our advantage if we couldn't line up. So, when we looked at that two years ago, it wasn't good. Now, it's a little more reality because of the state's, but we're trying to read, we're trying to find out. We should have a number. And I think that's why Signa is really shoving their pencil, they know they could lose this.
Right, right. Did you want to add that?
Yeah, we encountered the same experience a couple of years ago when the state approached us as well. You know, it was, it sounded like a great plan, but when you ran the numbers, it just was not favorable for the city for all the reasons that, that you guys had mentioned. You know, the, every, every town has different, you know, plan offerings. And when, when you start laying down the numbers, it, it may not be that efficient for you to enter into the pool. At this time, they've got to standardize the plans, just like, you know, now we're on the same plan as Florida. There may be opportunities there for us to join together, and we've had this conversation before. Again, the same issue is to standardize. And so that, that's a, you know, we're always going to count on those hurdles. We're rather new to Cigna right now, so we're getting over, you know, we're trying to get comfortable there. And then if you guys are still with Cigna, perhaps we can talk about how to, you know, get more comparable. But I think, you know, first thing is, is first, you know, shopper out, you know, make them sharpen their pencils, you guys are doing. And that's why, I understand why you won't commit. You know, why, why commit when you can, you know, look at the state plan and perhaps take a better deal with the state?
That's our point. Bill's behind me, you need to, Bill and Cameron, if you want to add anything? You guys?
No, other than, it's a very small thing. I think the value-added, some of them are misnomer, some of those things are value-added pieces. Textbooks, we cut those last year because we put in these discretionary, make up professional development from 150,000 down to 34,000, which the district our size is sometimes ridiculous. So those were just restoration efforts. The safe harbor interventions at South Park, that would be value-added pieces, and that's along the thinking of the governor and the commission of education, which is the other point. It's all about supplemental as opposed to supplanting, that's something we want to find in the mayor's department.
So could you just explain that safe harbor we have to, I've never heard of it.
Sure. We invented.
Before I, before I even heard of it.
I don't mean to throw a lot of educational jargon out at you, but under No Child Left Behind, NCLB, each period, period of time, choosing a couple of years, you do the cap test at the high school, you do the mastery test at the grades three through eight, you have to meet a certain threshold in terms of your scores. If you fail to meet it for two years in a row, you're identified as a school, you need an improvement. A safe harbor, it's called adequate yearly progress. You have to make reasonable, it's like going up a set of stairs. You have to make enough progress every year to get to that new threshold. Another way of making that, hitting that threshold is by saying, you know, you haven't moved all your kids forward to this new high level, but what you have done is taken the most difficult, most challenging youngsters, kids at the very bottom, and you've brought them up. So all the way in to hit this, you move a substantial number of kids forward. That's called safe harbor. And it's another way in the law to be deemed to making your threshold. We put in four safe harbor interventionists, as we call them, at one of our elementary schools. And that was the first school identified as being a school of need of improvement in this part of Connecticut. And it was the first school unidentified in this part of Connecticut. And it also won something called the Lone Pine Award, which stretches from Bridgeport to Greenwich, all the way up to Danbury. We were in competition with all school systems in that catchment area. And they have made more progress than any other school system in that catchment area, at Moore Street School. So we won that award, which was very nice and prestigious. But what it showed us was this was a good strategy for moving the school forward. So we exported that to Haystown Avenue School, to Ellsworth Avenue School, and to South Street, which were the other three elementary schools identified as being in need of improvement. And since they're Title I schools, they're subject to the sanctions. So it's a way of helping us to get those schools unidentified and demonstrate the kind of progress that I think we can make.
So do we have safe harbor last, last?
We only had it at Moore Street School. This year was the first year we put it in, the other three schools. And the report's coming back from the principals based on what they call common standards.
Four schools?
Four schools, I bless you. Moore Street, Haystown, Ellsworth, and South Street. And so obviously, we're monitoring their performance, and so far, it looks like we've got traction with that particular. It's a very small strategy because it's, you know, it's not a huge multimillion dollar effort. It's a tiny little strategy, but since it proved to work over at Moore Street, we thought if we did it the correct way, we could get some additional traction at the other three schools.
In addition, here in transportation, just two issues with that. Right now, with the reorganization of the Educational Elementary and Secondary Act, or NCLB, in there, we are providing an education for students that want to leave this school because it hasn't met its standard that we just talked about. So we have, consequently, we have kids going all over town, it's been very expensive for us. That's still, that's still moving forward. There's some possibilities that that's being stopped with the, defining for the waiver. And that waiver is why you're reading all of the reforms. The only way they're going to get the waiver, they're going to make all these adjustments. And that can help us maybe not, she's not making sure the year after. So we've had, had some busing too here. In this thing that Gladys was talking to you about, we've been talking with the bus company. We have permission to do a five-year contract. You may recall, five years ago, we renegotiated and we saved about 2.5 million dollars over five years. Next year's the last year of that contract. So we can take a peek at, they approached us as, you know, how to maintain our contracts. So we may be able to mitigate some of that, but it has to go through a process in order to get there. If it does, we will save some money. We have some very low numbers in there, very competitive. So, you know, over time, you know, we're not just trying to save for next year, although we are looking, you know, down the road. We're also opening a school in two years. It's going to, I think it's going to happen if, if they refer them, if something happens at the middle school. If not, you know, we're going to have major issues. But if that happens, we need a plan for that as well. So, you know, we're keeping an eye on that as well. But that's how the budgets are broken down, maintenance to move it forward, enrollment, the second page there with enrollment issues and mandates, and then the value-added program that we just talked about. And some of that's going to change, you know, not only is the benefits piece, but, you know, how this whole condition of funding is going to play out, you know, that whole process. And that's what we've been trying to get our arms around.
And we're still negotiating other contracts throughout the, you know, calling all our vendors in and saying, this is where we want to be, what's going to happen, so we're moving, you know, slowly on that. But hopefully, we'll be able to make some changes in our honeywell contract, our gas contract, our refuse contract, kidney bull's contract. So a meeting, this is where I want to be, I don't want to increase this year. We're going to handle that, so any contract we have, we're trying to renegotiate.
And I think one of the advantages of us working together has been if there's something in the budget where there's some spots where some expenditures don't have to happen, and then things can be picked off. We work with the city, picks some things off so that, you know, they're not exposures for us next year. And that's been helpful on both sides, whether we're using personnel together, or software, hardware, whatever it is. You know, there's some things that we can, you know, overall, it does, it may not seem like when you put it together, it does, it does help us to control costs. So we expect this number to be down. How far down will depend on some of these contracts that we renegotiate, so we renegotiate.
We're also working with Public Works, Park and Rec, you know, see where we can work together. We want to make some classrooms in the, in the middle school, divided classrooms. And Rec has been very helpful with us to get the plumbers in, and we'll build the walls and so forth. So it's a, it's a good cooperative relationship that we have with the city.
Yeah, one of the credits that we're paying for one, there was a chargeback in the last year in the, kind of, we're going to mitigate that, that's $300,000. So things like that, you know, it's all, it's all hands up. Down here, down here, you got a million, pretty soon.
Doug, did you have any idea of, I don't know, last year, I believe it was last year, a year before last, after everything was settled and the budget was taken care of? And then a little while after that, there was some money that was found by the board of directors, so on and so on. Is there any indication, is there anything out there that we should be aware of, maybe coming up?
Well, if you mind, I don't want to hear.
Yes, okay.
There was no money found. There was money that was in a Jones agreement with the mayor, and I think Dave knows, in terms of the error money that came in, it was $2 million, two plus, that was carried over. And rather go through a very complex system of accounting, we simply said to the mayor, when we receive the money, we'll return it. So we overspent, and then we just cut a check and returned it to the account. That's, that's, that's the big, right, Dave?
Yeah, I, I, I understand what you're referring to, and you're absolutely right. I think what you're referring to is something that came up during the audit, but that, you're referring to some of this stuff because you sit on the audit committee.
Right.
And that's, you kind of have, have the pleasure of seeing the sausage we make. And. And as Ed knows, you know, being my counterpart on the board on this side, you know, oftentimes, when they do incumbents, like the others are going to go through all that stuff at the year end. And they look at our estimates, they look at what happens, and oftentimes, when we make an estimate in July, that gets changed in, say, October, November, December, when the real numbers start to come in. And so we start making adjustments accordingly. And, you know, there's some adjustments in workers' comp. And because some of those claims that had come in, you know, PERMA made adjustments in their loans, are providing us those numbers to us and to the school, and some other adjustments as well. So what ended up happening is that the estimates number went down, you know. So just to provide some clarity on the accounting.
But in the, in the audit, don't they take that into consideration? Wouldn't they write the report?
Sure they do, and they did, and they did. And that's been addressed, Ed has addressed those, you know, those high estimates, if you will. And you guys have set procedures in to address that.
Right, yeah. And I think they're going to be able to procedures to Dave, who has them.
It's just a matter of tighten up the estimates a little bit. But as far as, you know, keep in mind, incumbents isn't money that's been spent. It's money that, you know, it's for the future, you're basically reserving something for the future.
So it's kind of like a cushion?
Nah, I wouldn't call it that, but.
No?
It's an estimate, it's not a, it's not a, you know, it's, it's a commitment of future funds that, you know, it's not last year's, you didn't spend it last year. It was really something that you anticipate doing this year, but, you know, with, with things like, you know, workers' comp and some of those others, because we didn't need to.
Because we, they figured out that we're going to spend X amount of dollars to reserve, because we have to pay the first $500,000. Well, thank God, we didn't have a lot of accidents during the last quarter, so that reserve went way down.
And just the last thing I'll say on this, because I know counting is boring for most folks, and I enjoy it, but we had a reserve on the books for.
That explains a lot about you.
And a sausage, you know.
Yeah, yeah. We, we had a reserve on the books for workers' comp. We started that a few years ago, and about four years ago, we've just been building that. You know, we've encouraged the school to build that up to an adequate level, as we have done as well, so.
Is that the Gatsby thing, the required amounts? I mean, it's got, we were, the concern we had was that if they were, if we were lucky enough to get to the year, and I say this as everybody's money counts, I don't say it's my money, your money, it's at the town's end in general. If there are some expenditures that we don't have to expend at the end of the year, we have been talking about putting it in this, this accounting system that's allowing us to hedge any future problems, rather than just, you know, just doing whatever. So that's the money that's being deposited in. That's been a healthy thing for us to do.
Yeah, I mean, for things that have, can have some major swings, such as workers' comp.
Yeah.
I mean, a couple cases can really, if you have an adequate reserve for those, they can be extremely costly. And, you know, we're required to properly reserve for those. And up until, as I said, a few years ago, we were not properly reserved.
Three years ago, I assume.
Yeah, actually, it was, it was about four years ago.
Can I ask you a question, Doug?
Five years ago, I might first of all.
Why, why is the freshman sports under maintenance budget?
It's not in the CSGA's budget. It's, it's.
It was not in the CSGA's budget.
It was in the CSGA.
Okay.
We did not budget for it. So to move it forward, if it wasn't there, it would move forward at zero. That's the only reason.
I have a question, so. Explain to me, I'm referring to the. You've got in the various departments, and I could have the names incorrect, but you have department chairman and department coordinator. Is that correct?
Let me, let me just. Yes and no, go ahead. I mean, it's worse than sausage. Let me explain it.
I was there 35 years, and there was one person.
One person?
There was one person.
Yeah. Well, what happened was, a few years ago, again, remember, the feedback I said to you is that we've had, the last four or five years, we've reduced that budget. Our span of control, which was a number of administrators per, per teachers and faculty, has increased dramatically. So rather than having a flat structure, guys, we have more of a, we have a different structure, particularly at central office. But the feet-on-the-ground people, people that had this view supporting teachers, we had single administrators that were running social studies. One admin, full-time administrator. We had another one that was doing science, one was doing math, all of those. Huh?
That's all I care about, science.
Well, the science of it wasn't working, because what created, quite frankly, not only was it, I think, inefficient, there were great silos and not good communication that was occurring. So what has happened, when we started the restructuring, along with the teachers' union at the time, because the administrators, you may recall, the teachers' union negotiated this, we put in the department chairman. Now, the difference between a department chairman and those administrators, those administrators had to work under what they call 92 certificate, or administrator. They did summative evaluation, all of that. The current department chairman are teachers who work in their craft as a teacher for two periods. And then they're released from their time budgeted, so they can work with department issues and help with teaching and learning instruction. And they do formative assessment of teachers. The summative assessment that was done by these full-time administrators is now done by the associate principals and the principals at the high school. And these people now are, instead of being K-12, we tried to have them what we call 612, although that's been a little shaky, they spend most of their time at the high school. So the difference is, these are teachers that are working for release time to be, the people call them leaders, they're really department chair. They work under a 105. 105 certificate, which is a certificate that has not used very much in the state, but is legally used. It's recognized for that purpose, for teachers' retirement, which makes it permissible. But these are teachers teaching with release time to work with their, with their departments. So we have one in, in the, in the core area. And then we consolidated the other areas, these full-time administrators, we have, now they're coordinators. They're doing math, science, STEM, that's the STEM we call it now, humanities, and we have bilingual, and we still have the same person doing our, our reading language, our reading program. So we've consolidated all of those folks. And the only other person we had as a director doing that was Sue Rice, who did technology. She had been reduced, and she's out of that mix. So that's, that's our structure now.
Is she still with the board, or she retired?
She works with us part-time. You have our multimillion dollar structure that needed to have some maintenance. So she's back on a consultant basis to convene meetings and making sure that the operation's moving forward. She's been doing it now, this is her second year. And the budget was asking for something else, and that's we're working with the city. We're going to bring someone on together so that we, we wouldn't have to use Sue in that fashion anymore. So that's what we're doing. They're not administrators, they're teachers working under this release time.
Are they teachers that are part-time, that have stipend?
No. Well, stipend, the stipend is part of the release time because of the added work that they're doing. If they weren't doing this, this department chairman, they'd be teaching five periods. So for the release time and for the extra work of the evaluation, the curriculum, the ordering, and the managing, the scheduling, they do receive a stipend for that.
But if they're working less as a teacher, do they get the full salary?
Oh, yeah, yeah, because they're on the teachers', they're on the teacher's salary list.
I just want to make sure I understand that, so a teacher.
You, let's say.
Who has different hats.
I hired Greg to be a science teacher. He had, and I go to him and said, "Would you like to be department chairman?" He suggests, he interviews, and gets the job. Instead of teaching five classes, now he'll teach two classes, and then he'll manage the other.
But he would still get paid the same salary for being a teacher, for teaching five classes?
That's right.
And additional money, and then a stipend?
And a stipend, a much smaller stipend. When we did this whole reorganization, we saved, you know, I mean, I can't remember the exact number, but quite a bit, quite a bit of money went from full-time administrators to this approach, which I think is better, more support to the teachers directly. Now, if you look at what other places do. Now, if you look at what other places do, we are on the skinny side of how we pay our folks, because we simply take your salary wherever you're at. So you, let's say you were there thirty-five years, and he's making X amount of dollars. Here comes Joe, just comes in, and he's been there five years, but Joe wants to do this work, so he gets release time. I pay Joe at a different salary, less than this. So there's discrepancies there. Some districts say, okay, no matter what you pay this department chairman, it's here, and it's above everybody else. We don't do that. We negotiated a contract that allows us to pay the salary and not make up the variance. And that's, that's not usual, I can tell you that, we're very lucky to do that. So I think it's much more efficient, effective, and more hands-on for teachers, and these people actually know the kids, know what they want, know the sectioning, you know, they're very helpful, they're good eyes on the ground.
Mrs. Kepner, if you're, the new teaching staff, five of them are in the middle school and the high school, right? Two in the middle school, three in the high school, is that right?
We think so. No, there's some elementary.
Well, yeah, that's minor, I mean, there's only one of them, you know, I can understand that, we just figured if they cared about it, it's all out of them. So is the vast increases in our, in our, this is all our kids, it's not just ours or yours, it's ours, is in the middle school and in the high school. And in the lower grades, are they pretty stagnant, or are they, usually, for my many years on your side, but on the other side there, the lower grades are always, got a lot of children in it, and then as they go up higher, for some reason, it gets less. You know, they leave, and it's unfortunate that some will leave, some things happen before they, that they can turn sixteen, things happen. So apparently, our problem is not in the lower grades, it's in the upper grades.
It's actually...
Now, this is your call, I know the board there is the only person, and they can do these things, the line items, but also, is there a new, is there new programs in the budget? Any new programs at all? Are we pretty much stagnant, and only getting increases in the upper staff because of enrollment?
The current budget, it's not the, there are no, I'm looking at, there are no programs, new programs, that are in there.
So the five staff, the majority are going forward because of the enrollment.
And also because of science, secondary science, there are three science teachers that are needed because of...
I can speak to it, Joe. I understand your question, it's a good one. No new programs, number one. Number two, the STEM program that we put into place to balance the enrollment at the two middle schools, our vision always was to have a hundred sixth graders, a hundred seventh graders, a hundred eighth graders. We currently have a hundred sixth graders, a hundred sixth graders coming in, a hundred sixth graders moving to seventh grade, and we have fifty eighth graders, we're going to have another hundred moving there. So we'll have a hundred sixth graders, a hundred seventh graders, and now a hundred eighth graders, which will require two additional teachers, because there are four teachers at each grade level. They take twenty-five kids each, and they rotate.
And that's in contract, the other certain amount of contracts, so there's not...
Well, certifications pushing issue to each other.
And the lower grades?
We have two.
Yeah, they can see, but is the enrollment in the kindergarten, whatever, the first grade, the lower grades are where you follow, which goes...
Yeah, we've been growing, but our principals are reporting back, they think tightening up, and if you remember, we increased the ratio, one teacher to, instead of twenty kids to twenty-two, or even five, so we're able to absorb those with two possible place holders, Stanley Ruff and South Street. The three at the high school that you mentioned, it's because of the fact that we had kids in science courses who weren't getting labs, and they had lab classes, so this has to happen. In fact, I can go back for a minute, I just want to go back, both you and Greg had some good points. Just for the record, we went from fifty-two administrators a few years ago down to thirty-four, a dramatic cut. I believe we now have the smallest central office staff, and the smallest senior staff of any school system our size in Connecticut, and probably some that are bigger than us. The second thing is, we were cited in the Cambridge report as not having enough direct supervision of teachers at the high school level, but because we cut so many people at the administrative ranks, it hurt us that way. Compounding part, you heard Mrs. Cooper speak to it, is that the board made the decision, which central administration certainly supported, at all costs, keep teachers in the classroom, so we cut the administrators. What happened then was, there wasn't enough direct supervision of teachers, Cambridge said, you're going to have to do something better than what you're currently doing. We didn't want to go back and add more administrators, so what we did was, we took teachers who said, and Colin's points, it's not like they're getting five teaching periods worth of salary and not, and only teaching two. They also have the other three, but that's their salary for doing this supervisory work, which was our way of addressing the Cambridge citations that we got from the state of Connecticut. So when all was said and done, we saved well over a hundred thousand dollars on the model currently, and we still had more direct supervision. The only downside, as the state is moving now towards an increased supervisory model for teacher evaluation, and we'd like to see every teacher observed and evaluated each year, our model is once every four years, so we don't have enough administrative personnel to back into that state model, and now we're struggling with that, and that's something we're going to have to come around. But as Sal said, it's helped a little bit by having these department heads, because with this one-oh-five certification, they're able to do partial observations, not the full-blown summative, but the ongoing formative.
I have a question pertaining to that. If you have someone, a teacher that is only going to teach three classes now, and take on the extra work, who teaches the other two classes?
It's part of the FTEs, you still have to make up that time, you still have, if there's twenty sections...
Are you hiring another teacher?
Well, there's teachers there, yes.
Sure.
If there are twenty, if there are twenty sections in a department, twenty sections, then you've got to cover all twenty sections. The department chairman, if it's released two periods, that means you're free short, so you've got to get someone to teach those three, and we haven't with any other deal. But even at that, turn the page...
Do you just use the other teachers?
At times, we didn't...
Is that why the study halls are so?
No, the studies, the study halls are there simply because...
Because of the electives.
Because of the lack of electives. You know, not only, at the secondary level, you, the way, you know, what you have class sizes, and if kids can't get into a class, and there's no electives, they go to study hall, unlike what you can do at the, you know, the elementary schools, that doesn't exist. But if you, page fourteen, I think we get, you know, from a policy standpoint, all, you know, it's hard to comprehend that, but when you look at the efficiency of dollars, I press, I ask a press for remarks of that. Take a look at page fourteen, which explains...
Page fourteen and page fifteen go together. What we did here was, there's a standard net current expenditures per pupil by the state, and that's a hundred percent, or whatever that is, and on the pages we go, or we look at, and we tried to see where was Danbury versus the state versus the DRG, which is our group of towns that are in H. So we're just saying that we are efficient in that our net current expenditures are below what the state averages, and below what our DRG, at the RG is in H, so just showing you that efficiency.
Yeah, and we showed this to you, I don't know if I'm that proud of that, I'm not, I don't know if I'm that...
So you're below...
Well, no, I'm not, quite frankly, I'm not. That's why I said, I think we're at a tipping point. We've tried to be very mindful of everything, and we're to the point, that's why we're working so hard together, you know, how are we going to get this thing moving forward? We are as good as we're going to be improving, we have an achievement gap, we are succeeding, but we need to do more things for our kids. Our kids' poverty, we have fifty, we have a number of poverty level kids that are increasing exponentially, it is going the other way. That is reflective of our mosaic in town, that, those are our, those are our kids.
Do you have a configuration of students that are in that poverty level?
Well, yeah, I mean, they, well, if, I think I understand, we identify it by free weekend lunch, that's the only common standard that we have. So it's predicated on their income level. For those parents that apply, we have the average in the, in the, is fifty percent. Some schools are lower, some schools are lower, but I don't think anyone is lower than thirty-five percent, we have to see that. And then the highest one we have is seventy percent, Marcy with seventy percent.
We've never seen growth like this.
Just seventy percent, yeah.
None of us have seen growth over our entire career, this dramatic increase in poverty, obviously driven by the economic climate, and it crosses all ethnic groups, it's not one particular group necessarily.
Now, to get a reduced lunch, what do you have to do to apply for that?
It's a form and a salary and, you know, so forth.
And is there something that...
And then it has to be ordered.
We have one, yeah. We check in, and then we go through another check-in, and the state...
Did they have to be checked for that?
Yes.
Be ordered.
You ordered a one, not some at all.
They have to show us their W-2s and so forth, I'm just making, maybe where it is.
Your certain company, and Egan asked for this?
We do it in the beginning of the year. Some people during the year have come up, they were payers, or they lost their job, so they filled out the forms and so forth.
That number, by the way, is what drives the supplemental work that we can do, and very hard to title it, but it's based on October one, so by October one, we try to get as many students as possible sign up for that, that are eligible. Then we turn in those numbers, that's the number that I'm giving.
So that's helpful.
Well, by October one, it's helpful from, that's why I say it's a mosaic, you know, it's coming together, it's still needing, but that's still predicated, depends how much money that we get in terms of title one. But through, after October one, all the kids that apply don't go to that number. They get, they qualify, but they don't qualify for state reimbursement for us, it's a little different.
Should we have to pay for it?
No, no, the government's will pay for it, we just can't use those, let's say we're at fifty percent, and after October, if they made the average in December, we're at fifty-eight percent. Well, then when I apply for title one money, we get more money, but the youngsters still get reimbursed for their lunches or the rest, they still pay for that.
The government has to say, okay, this is the date on everything. Like to see the grants for the state, October one.
They use October one for enrollment.
But if somebody comes in next week, you know, who's lost their job, they can fill out the forms and get free weekend lunch.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
So October first is the kind of form for renewed...
For the state.
For the state.
Anytime that somebody, something happens, just what happens, a parent called me, you know, husband lost a job, so forth, come in, fill out the forms and so forth.
What is that, what is that rate up at the high school?
The high school, all high schools are the same, a lot of people, they do not apply for that, and I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, I could get that clear, but the high, all normal high schools, kids don't like to apply for that. But what happens is, they're, if we know that they have a brother or sister, you know, I mean, because they, the brother or sister has gotten free weekend lunch, they automatically get it, but sometimes they don't come back and say...
They are met with, and they might not use it.
Correct.
Yeah, the other reason, I have a little more idea, we had to apply for a grant, and for extending that grant, our high school kids had to qualify, and they missed it by some percentage points, so there's about thirty percent that made themselves available as of October first this year. And we know there were more kids, but that's all that applied for, which negated us getting the grant.
Wow.
But that's, that's not why, for kids at the secondary level, they tend not to, not, not, not...
Even the elementary families are embarrassed, so they don't want to be recognized, and that's what they give their kids.
I don't know, but I don't know if there's any, any rumors or anything we can talk about. I know, I've heard about the return to two million dollars, but that was the arimony, the four hundred thousand, how come it's four hundred thousand, why you're on a million, I don't know if we talked about that. Sal's satisfaction, would you hear satisfaction?
Hold on one second.
Okay. I don't know if there's anything else, no, we don't have any new programs, and we do work with the city to pick off things that we do need. We are working feverishly, I can't tell you how hard, to try to access added resources that the government wants to give us. Now, in saying that to you, we all have to remember, I heard somebody talking about legislations like watching, you don't want to watch, Athens like watching with sausage, the government uses that term, we don't know if that's going to happen. So even though they say they're going to give us that money, so I don't, we can't, we can't really rely on it, we have a sense that they want to give us that money, but we don't know, so that's why we're trying to figure out, you know, how do we move forward? The board has been saying, quite frankly, you know, what are we obliged to do K-12, you know, between eight and three, you know, so when you ask me about freshman sports, you know, looking at, you know, curb participate, is that a good or bad thing? I have my philosophical reasons why I think it's strong, it's one of those bad, you know, bad choices among the things that you don't want to do, that you may have to do. We're looking at Head Start, you know, that's on the table, it's all on the table. The town is building a multimillion-dollar building, it's not that we're not supporting Head Start, but, you know, at what levels can we support that versus, the board's had the propensity to say, you know, add time to a youngster's schedule, look at full-day kindergarten, is that something you can do down the road? You know, that's back here, but we have previous preschool, can you eliminate that? So we're looking at all that stuff. You know, I think everything is a go here, in terms of what we're doing. All I can say to you is that we're working very hard to try to give the youngsters a best shot, that we can give them access as much money as we can for you through the state, and, you know, continue supporting our teachers. By the way, I go in those classrooms, we have a guided reading program, that means that kids can read on grade level and above, I can't give them the materials, they buy the materials, and I say thank you to them every time they do that. They do it on their own, they do it because the youngsters do it. So, you know, we are on this thing together in all of this.
So Head Start, there's one I heard a lot about, but you trying to, the board trying to, like, yada day?
No, it's not that the board's trying to, I don't want to speak...
Go away.
No, I know, it's not...
You asked for a rumor, isn't that right?
No, that's good, that's why I'm saying...
We're having a discussion about that.
Yeah, your discussion about the Head Start.
Head Start, code of, because it's not between traditional, let's say, eight to three, that's why the conversation, it's not whether or not it adds value to the youngsters' preparation in entering kindergarten. We have eighty-one percent of our kids have experience going into kindergarten. State average is about seventy-five percent, the city average is about seventy percent. So that eighty-one percent is knocked us out of these new five hundred seats that you're hearing the government talk about for readiness programs. So our kids are having preschool, so if that's eliminated, you know, we service through Head Start two-hundred-and-eighty students. Depends on if it's reduced, what it would do to, it probably still puts us into a compliance of, not a compliance, the state average, not particularly liking that average, I'd rather be above it, but it still puts us there. So the board's saying, what do we have to do, what needs to go to do that, and just kind of prioritize, just having conversations.
Well, I was sad to even hear it come up. Head Start's the best program that the city's ever had, or the state and the federal government have. You identify them children when they're young, there are a lot less problems when they're older, and there are a lot less, there are more aptitude to get ahead in the world, and I don't even know why that kind of situation come up, but when they run, they run next time around, I don't know why, something like that would even, that's already been smiled.
That's right.
I mean, that's your guy's, that's your guy's venue, believe me. I'd stand on my head in front of you.
Well, I think that's been a, probably a predominant...
Especially when a lot of our children are in this business.
It does impact, Joe, you've been there a number of years, it's not about whether or not it's good or it's bad, it's a matter of, you know, can we run the program from eight to three and do this as well? And I'm saying to you is that, I said, we're at a tipping point, and we've reduced so far, that now, it's really getting to bother people, it's a fly in your eye, because now it's affecting them. I'm getting calls from people, it's like, my kid can't do this, and my kid can't, well, yeah, because my kid can't get on that stop, they got to go down that stop, they've been doing it here for years, well, you don't have enough money to provide that kind of blessing. I mean, now it's beginning to bug people because it's hitting down personally.
That's right. It's not my kid.
It's...
You know, if it's not my kid, then it's, then it's, then worry the worry about it.
That's what you're getting what they're...
It's, that's not our thing, it's all our kids.
I know, but I'm saying, the reason why...
Well, we don't all think like that, Joe.
That's unfortunate, but that's the way it's supposed to be.
It's exactly the way it's supposed to be.
So...
I have to, you know, in your packet that you gave us, there was a few things that you had on here, from the two thousand...
That's the narrative.
Yeah, the narrative.
Just to show you what we love to have when we were reducing the budget campaign, is that?
Yeah, for last year.
Okay.
Certain cuts that were supposedly made, that, I was just wondering if they happened.
I don't know which one, Bob.
Well, the elimination of the full-day kindergarten program.
No.
The cuts in textbooks, we did cut textbooks, we know that, but we weren't, you didn't cut it to fifty thousand, they're going to cut it to one-third. Were the two fifty now is nine-thirds?
It was two fifty, we cut it down to...
To one-third. The elimination of the technology education at the middle school level?
Yes.
Yes.
Those eliminated, last year.
Yeah, family and consumer science.
But we did eliminate French. Are those, is that still on the table with this budget? Or we don't need to worry about that with your budget?
Well, I, right now, French and Spanish still on, world language still on table to be implemented in middle school. That is not, so that's the maintenance question. It's moving it forward.
So in this packet that you gave me, for us tonight, these were the reductions from last year. Says impact of 2011, 2012 budget reductions. Can you go through and tell me are there, what, what impact is it going to have for next year?
I don't, I can't do that yet.
So from your numbers?
Well, I still can't do that yet. But you asked me if that's in the budget. That is in the budget to keep. Those are the things. If you tell me out of my budget request...
Now I want to know the numbers that you've applied for and they are asking us for.
That's...
These are included?
Yeah. They are, that's what I'm saying. I gave you that because if you turn around and say, which I figured you can anticipate, what are you going to do if, on that page, is a result of a lot of thinking, what we would do is go right there and start looking at those things again and say, okay, maybe the French has to go.
Oh, because these haven't been eliminated yet.
Not all of them.
Right. Some have been last year.
That's right, that's right.
And the remaining will be subject for elimination if you don't...
That's correct. But in the maintenance part of the budget, it's taking what we have now and just moving it forward.
Does someone back there have a question, I think? Mrs. Granzello, did you want to add that?
No, I just, no, some of those have been eliminated. I didn't want you to think, but, right, go ahead.
If you go to page 18 of the handout you referenced.
Yeah, 17.
Uh, 18 though, actually. Well...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry. If you look at page 18, you'll see reduced coordinator, health services by 50 percent. It's the top cell on the left. That was done. The next cell on the left, assistant superintendent, we eliminated that. Coordinator, a curriculum master, defined applied arts, we eliminated that. Director of information services, we did not fill that. Director of special services in full time to 70 percent, we did that. We reduced the athletic director. Many, it doesn't, I don't want to waste your time going through, but many of these cuts, in fact, didn't happen. You'll see...
Last year.
Last year.
For this year.
For this year.
And if, and if we're cut further, we go back to that list, the ones that we gave you, that's the starting point for primary point conversation.
Well, I think it's important to know which ones are, which ones are cuts we're going to go through. I mean, pretty quickly, we did not reduce, we didn't eliminate full day kindergarten. Right?
Let me just get that, hold on, give me a second. Great, so let's go.
It won't, it won't take long, I guess.
No, that's fine.
We just have one full day kindergarten in each school.
One full day?
Yes.
For the school.
God, 11 full day kindergarten programs, as Phil said, the school district has one full day in each school. We did not do that.
The only exception to that is the magnet school, we're a three, but that's in the plan that the state had to approve to allow us to get the funding. Your operations plans of our 11 schools have kindergarten, they're not magnet school. They only have one program, one full day.
So there wasn't a, there was the cut, the full day kindergarten to just one full day?
No, traditionally it's been one full day and the rest are half day. We were talking about universal half day kindergarten.
Textbooks.
What's that down to, Bill?
It's 120, oh, 130.
120.
That, that was reduced, but not the...
130, 120. Oh, 120, I'm sorry, 120.
Elimination of technology was done. The French was not touched, there was left.
Elimination of three teaching positions at the high school and special education elective areas. No, that's not done.
Ali, just before you want to go back to that elimination of technology education, if you move your finger to the far right, you'll see family consumer, it's important because I think it gets to Greg's point before. Our, our instructional program has been substantially diminished. In part, we're seeing larger study halls, for example. If you look at the history, we eliminated tech ed, you'll see family consumer science was eliminated.
Oh, covered.
And also the gifted program was eliminated. Turned it to an outdoor school program. So that went from serving a lot of kids down to a very small group of kids.
So it was reduced?
Yep.
Well, with 350,000 down to 20,000. Is this, is this something where the school?
350,000 down to 20,000.
Was it 250, right?
No, it's 9,090 dollars, $9,050.
From what?
About 350.
Oh, yeah. And we're just adding, maybe up to 25,000 next year.
And...
Elimination of three teaching positions at the high school and special education and elective areas.
I couldn't do that, no.
Captain?
Yes.
Save. And we still have study halls that require 400 students.
And that's, that's one of the, yeah, we were looking at the electors there.
Did you eliminate two guidance counselors at the middle high school?
No, we did not.
Or reduced, we did reduce coordinator of health services by 50 percent?
Yes. That was an administrative position by 50 percent, right?
Elimination of administrator positions. We got one assistant superintendent, brick lemon administrator for fine arts. That was eliminated. Administrator for reach and endeavor programs was not...
No, 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 we didn't do the reach at number, no, there was not...
That was saved.
Yes. We didn't fill the director of information services?
And that was cut?
Yes.
Oh, we didn't have any more. We didn't, that refilled. So it wasn't refilled?
Not, not this year. We have a proposal to do it next year. Ask the city to do it. Director of special services has been reduced to 70 percent. The athletic director was reduced. And I'm not sure about the guidance department had, we didn't fill that position.
So that was, I did not go technology system.
Analyst position, we did not fill that. Did not fill the elementary school psychologist. What did we do there, Joyce?
We did not fill it.
Did not fill that. Did not, we did, three paras eliminated, so we did all that. Did we do all those?
Yes.
Professional development from 130 to 34,000.
We did that.
Do that. Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to see if anyone from the board of ed would like to add to the discussion, and also any expat CEO members, if they wanted to have, if they had any questions that they wanted to ask? No? Mary Ty Schultz, I see you over there.
I do have a question about Head Start. Sorry, Joe. What is the funding that the federal government and the state give to our, give to the Head Start program?
The combined state, federal, local. Local is 585,000, and the difference comes from state and, and federal.
What, do you have those numbers?
Uh, maybe.
No, no.
No, I mean broken down. How much does the state give? How much? I'm just trying to get a perspective.
Joe, you have it?
Yeah, I have it. Head, Head Start federal is $694,000 from the federal. The state portion is 214,000.
214,000. 707. And then 585,000 from the board of ed.
So we give more than double what the state gives to Head Start, the city. All right. And my other concern with Head Start is, I don't know if you realize, I'm also on the housing authority, and I have begun to realize that the children from Laurel Gardens are not being serviced at Laurel Gardens for Head Start. They're being bused over to Melridge. And that's a concern. There are approximately maybe three to four families. It's putting again behind the eight ball. It's a concern. The Head Start monies, I, I'm just concerned about it. I'm trying to figure out how we're going to kind of get a nonprofit lean them off of city funds. I mean, is there something in place for this to happen where the nonprofit starts writing grants, asking the state for more money? Because I, I don't know. It doesn't really make sense that we're paying that much more than the state is giving to Head Start. Not that I, I mean, I think Head Start is a great program. I just feel like it's not in balance right now.
That, that's, that's such a issue. That's why we're having dialogue seriously the first time. One of the issues that we have is when you don't have full day kindergarten, you look for everything you can in local playing field. I mean, that's, that's what Joe's point is, he's making. While we can provide it, the compression factor of that from four years ago, we were, we, 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 the city has paid for the difference that the feds and the state have not given them, because we own all of the employees. Now, if you eliminate that program entirely, there are 37 employees that we have to pay unemployment charge, which is roughly around $200,000. That's not in his budget, by the way.
So you don't want unemployment in his budget, I didn't see it.
Yeah, it is unemployment.
Worth it, yeah. I didn't see it. Try to find it.
It's $200,000 in unemployment.
So that we, we would have to pay. So we're having conversations now about other programs. We eliminated, you may have recalled, a few years ago, we had two literacy people that were helping with the, we eliminated one because the grant went away and we couldn't, we couldn't sustain the program. And there's a lot, a lot of budgets that have been cut because the grants have been stabilized.
Sure.
And we've, we've cut that much out. Head Start has not been touched. That's why we're seriously looking at, you know, can we continue doing it? There's some real questions.
I mean, I'm, I'm not attacking it. I'm just asking questions about it.
No, that's, that's what we're looking at.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes.
I, I think Head Start is a, is a good example of how we really, in the past, we might have looked at that program on its own. But I, I think, you know, we've looked at, what is the issue that we're trying to address here? And then we looked at the whole issue holistically. And Head Start, yes, comes into play. Very importantly so, because we're looking at building a, a building for Head Start. You know, and then you, you take into the, the goals that, you know, Sal wants to do in the future, combined with our goals that we want to do in the future, you know, in support of, of education. And I think the, the important thing to recognize is, you know, looking at, looking at these issues on its own, it's not the approach that we do anymore. We look at the whole thing together and try to solve it together, you know, on, on, on a lot of levels. And that's the approach we've been taking quite a bit this year. And it's, it's been working, you know, very effectively. And, and we hope to, you know, put together, work with you guys to put together a package that makes sense, you know, given our fiscal constraints as a city and the needs to, to deliver the educational services to the children. So, you know, because it, when we, when we put together a budget, what, in, in my view, and this is just my perspective, it's, it's pretty much, you know, money is set aside. I, I don't expect it back. I can't say that for the departments. You know, just because I put a number in there doesn't mean they're not going to have the ability to spend it because there are so many other factors that come into play. You know, other revenues, you know, the building revenues, some other state revenues. But the fact of the matter is that, you know, when, when we set money aside in the budget for, for education, we expect you guys to, to do with it what you're, you know, put your plan together. And when there's some money that comes back to us at, at the end of the year, hey, that's great. But we don't expect it, in my department. Yeah, I don't expect it. And you're obligated to return it.
Don't tell me that.
And, you know, and, and oftentimes, we, you know, we have worked together to try to, to address some anticipated needs in the, in the upcoming year, because we know it's going to be a tight year. And it's like that year end. You don't know what the next year's going to have, but you do know what this year's going to have. So you try to, to work your numbers out to, to your advantage. And, but we do that together. And I, I think that the important thing is that, you know, you, you do the job that we expect, that is expected of you. And, you know, so, I, I guess the bottom line is, unlike the departments, where I have to, to keep them, you know, you, you can't spend all the money I put in your budget because of some other things. You know, when we give you that number, whatever the number the council decides on, you know, that, I'm not expecting anything back. It's nice, but the reality is, that's been your mark for education.
Mrs. Malinari, did you have a question?
Not a question. I just wanted to address the Head Start issue of just one little thing. The argument for us not funding Head Start is a good one, especially in the constraints that we have on this budget and budgets to follow. However, I don't think decimating it all at once is the way that we should go. You know, possibly just funding it less and less each year and let Mr. Maloney, who was the executive director, go someplace else and, and find the funds that he needs is the, is the, is the way to do it humanely. Because otherwise, we will just be decimating a wonderful program that has worked for us. And they are our children. They are our teachers. The fidelity to curriculum is important to us. They're teaching them the correct way so that when they get into kindergarten and first grade, they are prepared. So that's all I want to say about that.
Mr. Levy, you had a comment or question?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Mary. I agree with what Sue was saying, that Head Start is, is a great program. I think that we're put in a position of making the choice, in some cases, whether we can have all day kindergarten for all of the children that need it in our school system, or do we fund a federal program? And that's the choice. What I would like to know is, some of the in-kind services, such as utilities, teachers, benefits, and things of that nature, that add on to the, the monies you were referencing. Actually, what is the add-on on the in-kind services?
I'll take the easy part. The 585,000 that we give them, goes all to the...
Benefits.
To the benefits. To run the program for the 280 students, somewhere in the vicinity of 1.6 million dollars. All of the utilities with, remember, with their house over at MRI, of no rich educations at MRI, we pay for all the utilities. Now, you know, they pay for their own supplies, remember, but we pay for all, all of that. Now, I'll just, is that correct?
37.
How much, I don't know.
So, you know what, really, we're talking about somewhere in order of maybe $3 million?
No, I don't think that much.
In-kind services along with...
We're paying utilities, but, you know...
And teachers?
No, 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 no. Teachers are in the...
Transportation.
585.
Transportation, yes.
Transportation.
Yeah.
We'd have to get that number.
Yeah.
But, you know, that building would be open because we have our students there. But we do, we, ever since they've been there, since I've been here, and when we had that as Melridge intermediate, we had 250 students there. They, we didn't charge them any, that was given for the in-kind. Now, some of that, what we got to look at, and I don't know the answers, because it's not my program, in order to qualify for grants, you have to have in-kind services to match up. So I don't know. That may have been a prerequisite and the getting is all that. Although, stop and think about it, next year they have their own building. You basically, $10 million, whatever it is. They have a building. I don't know what it is, but they have a building. You've been able to access some state money, but they'll be out, so we won't have any commitment for that. That's on theirs. We won't be paying their tab there. We won't. They'll probably be at our place on the outside of, depending when they're through, maybe to January, or maybe sooner. But we won't be paying for it.
But I would concur with what Sue was saying. It certainly has been a good program for the community, and probably with the depressed economy, and it looks like this might be the new norm, we probably are going to see that program expand. And we shouldn't just drop it. We should, but we should have a plan in place to back out of it.
Thank you very much, Warren.
You didn't hear Obama's going to fix everything.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. I'd like to... Yeah, motion for, to adjourn. I'm hoping, we're going to try and work something out. That's what I'm going to choose for, I don't have it set yet.